I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we can have a moment of silence for our service members that are deployed overseas during this celebration. Thank you.
I want to take a moment first and say hi to them here. Tonight's my first night, so please bear with me. I will eventually get it, but if I mess up, I apologize and I will be corrected. I'm by professionals. We're good hands, folks. So there is no special presentations tonight. Oh, welcome. Sorry, I skipped right over that one. There we go. That's what I was talking about. Here we go. Um, welcome, Chief Sutter.
Scott Sutter, chief police. Don Gray, city deputy director.
Brenda Seivens, city councilor.
Thomas Hicks, city councillor.
Denise Phillips, city councillor.
Brad Dick, city councillor.
Elizabeth Armstrong, mayor.
Mike Gilger, city attorney.
Jerry Lake, city councillor.
Pam Howard, city councillor.
Alan Glass, city manager.
Next is special presentations and we do not have any too many. Public hearings, we have no public hearings. Do we have any correspondence? No correspondence. So we're moving on to public comment. First up is Chris Kenyon.
You wouldn't be Chris.
I'm sorry.
Going for the best.
Am I on?
Yes.
Okay, where's my notes? First, welcome, all you guys. And thanks very much for those of you who came out and helped us out with the parade this week. I appreciate it very much. Now, I'm putting my happening in London hat on. They save every year, but I want to personally thank the council staff for all their help with this event because we couldn't do it if we didn't have to support the city government. And just on side note, Don, the DPW rock bit this year. Pass that on for me. We had a few glitches, but when did we do that? But I think the event was well received and everyone had a good time. We'll be wrapping up pretty soon with the meeting. Open some suggestions, comments, whatever. Any questions for anybody, I'll try to answer them or take them back to our board for when we have our meeting. So, thank you very much, guys.
Thank you, Chris. Next is Monica Warner.
So Monica Warner, 152 West Rossner Road, London. So, I really like the podium where it belongs. So whoever listened in that regard, I really appreciate that. So I just have one item. Going back to the police reports for October, between the second and the 28th, there was nothing. And I had a police incident on October 11th, and that wasn't recorded. And so now it kind of makes sense that when I talked to Chief Sutter, he didn't know what I was talking about. And so the second time I talked to him, you know, he kind of smoothed things out, which I appreciate, you know, on his part. But, you know, why are some of the things on the police report and some things not?
Thank you, Monica. We're going to be moving on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
We have public, we have the questions for the consent agenda.
We have questions. We would like to move the boards and commissions appointments to the new business so we can have conversation about it before we approve that.
Which, which item are you referencing?
C, the 2025 boards and commissions appointments.
So you're asking to move that off consent agenda onto new business?
New business. Just a few questions today. So the consent agenda would just include the minutes of November 13th and the resolution adopting the annual exemption for public Act 152.
Is there a motion to approve it as amended?
Yes, I make a motion and we approve the consent agenda as amended.
Support.
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We have no unfinished business. New business is first bid award for curbside solid waste recycle and yard waste collection.
Madam, in your packet and the rest of the councillors, you guys have seen that we did do proposals. We've been with Republic for many years. Our last contract renewal was just an extension. We did an extension with Republic. And so this time we did go out for bids. We received three bids and you can see that Waste Management Priority and Republic Services were those three bids. I know I had some questions regarding low bidder and what we did as staff is we went through and we qualified all the bids and reviewed them over the five-year period. And technically, priority waste was actually the low bidder over the five years. So in the first two years, Republic, or not Republic, I'm sorry, Waste Management was a little bit lower, but in the last three years, they were more expensive and priority.
We also currently service multiple HOAs in Hartman's and Howell, Highlands, Woods Creek, Holly, Corona, Flint. We can honestly keep on going within the area, but most of them said that if you guys would like, we can, they would offer records for us. And one of the major things that we do is our technology. We have a camera system that we utilize and also an online portal via Teams chat, which whoever is involved can live chat with someone on Teams rather than email or phone call. They can live chat with someone on Teams for anything that is needed. So they can just pick up and connect that. We have live camera, everything that can be needed for it. Are there any other questions that anyone have? Brad, can you briefly talk about your rollout for your collection carts? Yes, so we would have carts ready and we would be able to stage them and deliver them upon a Republic removal of carts. We would have the trash and recycling carts available.
Excuse me, are they the same size as we're using now?
They are the same size and there's no change to any collection date. So the only thing that you would see change is the color difference.
Chris, do you have any questions?
Yeah. The price we say now, Ellen, the price to go over to priority, is there a lot of difference in the price from the month?
No. Brooke, not to put you on the spot, but what's the, do we, do we have the difference in what the contracts are? Yeah, we'll get that for you. Brad, what were you going to say?
It's about $3 a year.
Oh, yeah. I just wanted to make sure you have the rate. I wasn't going to math.
My other question, my other question would be, do you still pick up the large waste as far as somebody have a refrigerator or couch?
Yes, according to the contract.
How does someone go about ordering that?
So if it's on there, we will get it as long as, and one of the major things is freon. So passive review from freon. That's something we get all the time, but yes, we will do that according to the contract.
And the other means Christmas is coming up, you're not going to have to deal with, but a lot of people have all those boxes. How, if you can't fit it in your container, or you, can you put it next to your container?
Yes, that is, yeah, that's part of the RFP for on-the-ground pickup.
Alright, thank you.
Brad?
This contract does not have any fuel surcharge or anything I have to worry because I understand.
Nope, everything that you see on there is what the price is.
Makes a huge difference. What you see is what we pay.
Yep.
Jerry?
No, no questions.
Pam?
I have a question about your recycling program. What types of plastics do you accept? Like the numbers?
Uh, one through seven.
You take all?
Yes.
Oh, that's a huge impro, oh, sorry. Well, the other one was like one, two, and six, I think. But, so that's huge. Do you take box four too?
Box four.
Kleenex box, cereal box?
As long as it's clean cover, we can take that.
Okay.
That's great. Brenda?
Oh, no, I, through everything, it's wonderful. I like it. We had a few discussions. Actually, Brad's one of the best people to talk to about this type of thing. So I had a discussion with Brad and then I looked at the three companies compared and yours looked like the best. I like it that we're not, you know, $3 is nothing compared to what we could have been paying if we stayed with Republic's higher price. I, I think to get that, you know, good service and pick up more of our recyclables and make our big items, I think we're getting a really nice deal. Good job researching with that.
Tom, do you have any further questions? Does the audience have questions?
Is styrofoam recyclable?
No, styrofoam is not recyclable.
Does the audience have, yes, sir.
So you, we will work with Republic on that to be awarded it. So we would switch the cans out as Republic takes the contain, as Republic takes the carts.
Yes, ma'am.
On recycling, do you have directions that will be handed out? Like can you put them in plastic bags and put them in the container?
So as part of the, of the switch out is we will have a educational piece that will give you an outline of exactly what can be recycled, what cannot be recycled, everything like that. So it'll all be a part of something we would mail out or put on top of your containers that will give you the exact educational piece of everything.
Chris?
Kristen, where, Brenda, do large items, do they need to contact you for pickup or if they just put it out, you'll take it?
So, correct me if I'm wrong, part of the RFP is a maximum of one bulk item per week. So that would be that maximum bump, not just correct me if I'm wrong, maximum one bulk item per week, but they would not have to call in for that.
They would not have?
No.
Okay.
And if there's anything out there that we cannot take, it will be tagged with the reasoning on why we cannot take that. Like I said, freon is a big one. So if it has freon in it, our drivers will get out, mark it, and put a sticker on it and say, this cannot be taken because of freon or because of, God forbid, bad bugs.
Okay, example, somebody's replacing carpets, so they put a bunch of old rolls out there. Is that comes one item or is that a phone call?
A bunch of them will have to be, if it's just one, it'll be one.
One roll?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I did say. There is limitations. We can't expect our drivers to be lifting up like 400 pounds worth of rolls. A little bit much, that might turn into a safety issue for us.
Any further questions?
I have one.
I say none. Pam?
Paper shreds. Do you take paper shreds?
So what we can, you're talking like just straight paper shreds or?
Paper shreds from a Crystal Home shredder?
Yes, but, yes, we can do that. As long as it's in a clear plastic bag.
Clear plastic bag and you'll, those are part of your education because Republic will not take paper shreds right now and so many people have them.
That is, as long as it contains in a clear plastic bag.
Okay, and then do you ever do household hazard waste days?
We can offer, yes, we can offer household hazard waste days. Now that will be something that the city and us will figure out. So as part of that, we can do, like you said, household hazard, but we can also do a paper shredding day also. So in terms of, you know, if there's sensitive material that needs to be, get, Brenda, they put it and it'll be shredded and gotten rid of.
Security bin?
Yes.
That would be above and beyond it.
That would be above and beyond what is currently.
But household hazardous waste, everybody has it, between, you know, things, salt livers and.
Oil batteries, all of that, all that stuff. Yeah, we currently do that for quite a bit.
Can't go to landfill now.
We currently do that for quite a bit of communities. That's above and beyond what the current RFP is. But we can do that for quite a bit of communities and we currently do that.
Even if we've worked with like Fenton and had a joint day or something, that would be awesome.
If you could do that, that's perfectly fine. Like I said, we do not.
At Fenton Township in London, because we do work together in so many things.
Yes, you can, like I said, my contact is Mike Hart and then Bull. I don't know if anyone knows who Bull is, but those are my current people that I work with over and through. So I'm sure we could do that.
And I have two quick questions.
Yeah.
So long ways leaves, you pick up, what are your, what is your season for that? I didn't see it. I mean, it wasn't there. I didn't see it.
Yeah, so it's the first week of April until I believe the first weekend in December. So it should come.
Okay.
Yep.
And then the other one, not saying it's going to happen, just wanted to know what the happening did. I didn't see this. What is the cost to get out of the contract early if we chose to?
That would have to be as part of the contract. We'd have to discuss that because I can't say exactly. There'll be through a legal situation rather than, you know, exactly. There is a performance out, but other than that, we would have to discuss.
Alright, thank you.
One more question. Chris, is there your cycling?
That is a part of the RFP and we have agreed to do that.
A lot of fun, Brandon, yeah.
Why not? We read through it. They, um, they, Chris, they were very, very thorough.
Do we have a motion to approve the bid award for curbside solid waste recycle and yard waste collection?
I make a motion that we have the curbside pick up to a priority.
I second.
Kristen?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Simons?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Armstrong?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm a forward to work on it, Bobby.
Moving on to the next item, scope of engineering for local bridge maintenance.
Evening, mayor. City council. I look for you tonight as motion to approve the attached engineering scope of services for the maintenance of the Ripley Road and the North Main Street Bridge. The city of London did receive a grant for preventive bridge maintenance to be completed in 2026. The grant was awarded in the amount of $194,000 for the Main Street or North Bridge and $209,000 for the Ripley Road Bridge. The remaining 5% of project, projected project cost along with engineering expenses associated with the project do remain the responsibility of the local community. The grant funding provides an outstanding opportunity to leverage our road maintenance dollars in the preservation of these structures. The attached scope of services covers all the necessary submittal information to be included in the 2025 MDOT program. A second engineering of service construction contract will be followed in 2026 once the state of Michigan bids and awards the contract. So tonight, again, it's just for design engineering to comply with the MDOT requirement.
Thank you. Chris, do we have any public comment on this topic? Same thing? Jerry? No questions. Pam?
No questions.
Brenda? Tom? Denise?
No questions.
Brad?
No questions, but good job on giving Brandon.
Is there a motion to approve the attached engineering scope of services for the maintenance of the Ripley Road and Main Street Bridge?
Some move.
Support.
Kristen?
Armstrong?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Simons?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Moving on to 2025 boards and commissions appointments.
So we had some questions. Pam, do you want to go first? I know Pam has a question.
I looked through all the, the list of commissions under 20s and I really didn't have a lot of questions except for, and that's the small cities. Right now I am ten on behalf of London and I was selected to be vice chair for next year. But I can only be vice chair if I'm selected as delegate. But they allow two alternates to be part of that. I was told two to three though. So what I would like to propose is that I remain as delegate for that position and then Jerry and yourself would be, would just be alternates. And you can still come to all the meetings and also there's meetings, I don't know if you're aware, but they're all over the, they're all, they take place all over the country. Some of them are thirty miles or so, but, so it involves a lot of driving from, I'm very happy to serve in a capacity. And I also would like to recommend that, that you stand, you be part of the boards. I know you'll probably just, you'll attend the meetings, right?
Well, my name was on that list.
Yeah, I meant for like the, the commission for town development and all that. Oh, good, good, good. Because I didn't see your name. I thought, you should be there. That's, that's all I had to say. That's the only thing I wanted to bring up is that we should be on those committees too.
I just have a few questions. Yes, under Parks and Rec, we have some advisory members and I'm, I'm not familiar with that. I didn't think we had those and I didn't think that that was something we could have, but that might be something you can answer, Mr. Governor?
Probably not, is the short answer.
Just briefly?
Yeah, if you would. Well, let me, in, in, right, just to break the background. So I was asked some time ago, there was a lot of questions about term and some inconsistencies in the existing boards and commissions and who is eligible for what, et cetera. So I looked in to that. I gave my comments to Ellen. I don't remember the Parks and Recreation Commission advisory member aspect of it and that's why I'm going to defer to Ellen.
So I think between Kristen and I, we can try and figure it out. So we looked at, we looked at the state statute, we looked at the ordinances and then we looked at the bylaws for all of the boards and commissions to make sure that we were in alignment, as Mike said. The Parks and Rec Commission actually does say in the ordinance, and Kristen, correct me if I'm wrong, that it asks for advisory role. There's two. So they were never designated as advisory in the past and so we're just cleaning all of that up and that's why they have that advisory designation. So moving forward, that won't fall off and everyone will know. So these are all in compliance with, with the bylaws, the ordinance and the statute.
Wonderful. That's all I needed to know on that one. The veteran license, I'm on that board. We don't meet very often, but just to remind me, is the mayor supposed to be on the board? Is it okay to have the two, the two delegates? And you and I are on that, Ellen, and I don't have a problem being on it, but I thought that required the mayor. Does that?
And, and Mike? And Kristen, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it designates the chief of police, the city manager, and then two appointees from the city council. It does not have to be the city mayor.
Okay.
That's, that's my recommendation.
Good, thank you very much. The last thing I wanted to say is that there are some really great resumes in this package and applications. I really was impressed with some of the qualifications, but a few of the resumes or a few of the applications didn't have much detail. So I just wondered how many people were selected for the board. I really want to call people's names out. I wasn't sure how Ms. Rachel got assigned to Parks and Rec. I didn't see much on her application. Do you know?
She, she asked to be on it.
Okay.
So we received even outside of, so every year, every year we do the board and commission appointments. And throughout the year, we may, we may have residents come to us and express interest. And so we, we collect those and have those on file and we only had, I think, two or three. And so working with the mayor, she makes a recommendation for appointments and then gets the applications and if there's resumes attached. So that's what you're seeing tonight.
Okay, I was just concerned about the leanness of the qualifications for a few people. And I texted the mayor to ask a few questions about those, but we didn't talk about it, so I wanted to ask that here. I'm just concerned about the leanness of the qualifications. You know, and one of the boards, we have three brand new people. So, you know, I, I just don't want people to get into trouble, right, and not have the right leadership and not have the right, there's one group in here. Let me take a look. There's one group in here that has three new members.
What group is that?
I'm looking. Sorry, I picked them up a little while ago.
So we're going to work, the staff will work with each of the boards. As you're looking, Brenda, if you need to look through, I can explain a little bit to. The staff will work with the boards and commissions to get any new members signed up for any, any training that's necessary.
Board review.
Board review. To make sure that they feel comfortable. Board review has a very specific training that we will require all of the members to go to. And all of the members, except for the alternate, were stepping down. So we would have had three new members regardless with that board. So, but that has a very specific training. So does planning commission, zoning board, and we, we like to get those, those individuals signed up right away and make sure they work very closely with us as staff. You know, anything planning and zoning related will work closely with Adam. So sometimes it is hard to get information on the applications, you know, sometimes it's hard to just get, get the applications collected.
For the training videos available and there'll be a lot of handholding. So, so as long as, you know, everybody needs to, up to age mature. Makes sense. Thank you. Yeah.
Without a doubt, we'll, we'll be supportive and be able to help too.
So to answer, I want to start with Pam's question. To answer your question, Pam, how long, I, I would like to know how long you've been on small cities?
About three years. About three years.
So traditionally, it is the mayor and an alternate. That is the traditional path of that.
Well, that, the bylaws, they updated them last year and so it goes for two.
That's why I didn't say according to the bylaws. It's traditionally, it is the mayor and alternate, okay? Moving forward, I have to look at the people spoke and the people want the council members that they elected, okay, to learn and be in positions where they can learn and where they can succeed. And so that is my job to do so, okay? And that is why I did what I did. I did not know anything about this up until a couple of days ago, but I had already asked Jerry and next year I have asked Denise. I'm going to be that transparent and say that I, because I know that there were things in small cities that each one of these two wanted to learn. It's the same reason that I asked Tom to go on the historic district because he has a great interest in businesses and Denise as well with businesses. And so I was very thoughtful and mindful in each of the placements, but also wanting to make sure that each new council member had the opportunity to be successful and learn new things. And everyone, I was trying to make it so that everyone got something that they wanted to do, to be successful. So we'll start. Brenda, do you have any further questions?
No, I'll say thanks.
Tom?
I'll say thank you.
Denise?
I will back you up, what you said and what she both said. They wanted new people and looking at what we're doing. And one thing that was clear going out, they didn't want relatives. They wanted new people on boards. So I think you've accomplished that. Thank you.
Pam, any further questions?
No.
Jerry?
I'd just like to say this second, what Denise had mentioned on my walk around talking to residents, that was, nepotism was a concern, not that it was necessarily an issue, but the optics of it and the potential for there to be a problem was mentioned several times when I was knocking on doors, talking to people. So I believe that's a good idea. Not saying that there's, most of the time, there's no issue with that, but it is, it does lead to people to ask questions. I support you on that.
Brad?
No further questions.
Ma'am, we just need clarification on the liquor, the liquor license commission because you, when you give the appointments, you listed Tom Ordenese. So I guess you guys just need to clarify who.
Which one?
The liquor, the liquor.
Okay, yes, yes. Which, which person is what you're saying?
Yeah, so we just need to designate only one, Tom Ordenese.
I'm going to give this to Denise. Is that okay? Liquor license commission?
It's up to you guys. You guys, for you guys to sign.
Okay, we all need to vote or just?
No, you just need to clarify that it can't be two.
Can I make a comment on that, ma'am?
Yes.
That liquor license commission, we meet maybe once a year if that, so it's not really like heavy duty.
Thank you. Any resident comments? Yes, Jerry?
I have a question. So according to another meeting, this was to be posted on the website. Am I correct? The city website that there were positions open, correct? Now, I must have missed it and that's, I'm pretty busy, so I'm sure I missed it. I remember them saying that the applications were taken in December. What I'd like to suggest is since we're going to this alert system, that we put situations like this on the alert system to open it up. So everybody, because like I said, I didn't see it. I'm assuming the clerk would probably post something like this, but maybe I'm wrong. But that's so the community can see. So we have, I mean, all these people here are concerned, citizens, I've been coming, I'm concerned, I couldn't find it. I just so more people in our community are aware of these board positions open. And also just want to confirm, is it, are these positions only for a year? Is that how they run or does it?
Do you want to answer that? Okay. All of them are different. All of them have staggering terms, so they don't all expire at the same time. So we don't have, you know, everybody coming off of a board. So they all have, depending on which board, they all have different staggering terms.
Is that posted? Because like, so is their term, when their terms are up, posted? Can we get that posted? So like, for instance, if I go to the Linden school board meetings, I know when somebody's terms up. I would know when your term's up. How about these people? Like, do we know that they're done in March, December? You know what I'm saying? Is that something we can have out there and again, blast an alert out?
Yeah, I don't know if we have our boards and commission, those, obviously the terms for council is very different. They were elected. These people are being appointed to serve in.
Understand.
Volunteer capacity. So, but as far as posting the expiring terms, we, we keep track of that as staff and provide that to the mayor. And then they make recommendations with that list of people that are expiring terms or either if they're filling a vacancy and things like that. As far as posting of the applications and the need for it, we do post it on the website. We do share it on social media. But yes, with the Civic Plus, we can certainly try to provide an opportunity in there.
Great. Thanks.
I want to say that as I was going door to door through the summer, I, when people would tell me that they were interested in being on boards and commissions, I would write down their name and their address. And those are the individuals that I did end up going directly to. So it was people that did express interest to me over the summer and spring and even some last winter. With being on boards and commissions, I will be doing that again. I'm trying to keep a running list. So if people are interested in being on boards and commissions, they can feel free to reach out and I'll make sure that their application is turned in to the city. Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, I've heard a number of, of some of our new council members say that they've talked to a lot of people over the summer. I just want to say that I lived in Linden for twenty years and nobody over the summer knocked on my door. It's all right. I mean, I have elected it. I'm just saying that those people that you talk to don't necessarily represent the entirety of Linden because some of us were taught to. I'm a little bit, I don't understand how the process goes so much because I don't understand. But I just want to get that. I did not hear you say that the bylaws don't matter. Because that's kind of what I felt you were saying and I just want to make sure to get on.
For small cities, it's a separate, it's not a Linden board or commission. And it's not that they don't matter, but typically it has been the mayor. I did read through it, but typically in every city, small city, it is the mayor and an alternate that goes. And so that was why I said what I said, because typically it is supposed to be the leaders of cities getting together and collaborating. That's the purpose of that meeting.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Are there any other resident questions? Is there a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five boards and commission appointments? Thank you, motion.
Do you need a roll call for that, Kristen?
I don't want a roll call, but please. Lynn?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Armstrong?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
And now we're going to move on to the city managers.
Yes, just a few things. Really quick, while we're just coming up boards and commissions. I would encourage anybody that is ever interested in being on a board or commission or serving in any capacity, go to our website, fill the application out and get it to us because we always have vacancies throughout the years and it's always nice to have a list of people that we can call on throughout the year and have it readily available. And so we're not trying to scramble to find people to fill those boards and commissions. So you don't have to wait till next year. Get it into us. We keep a file of them and work with the mayor to make those necessary appointments and things like that. If you have a question about boards and commissions specifically or anything city related, obviously that's what us as staff is there for, so we're happy to answer any questions. All of the bylaws, all of the statutes, all of the ordinances and things like that that govern each of the boards, we do have that information on our website. And a lot of the questions that are being asked are in, on, you know, are answered in the bylaws or the ordinances and things like that. So happy to field any of those questions. I just wanted to quickly thank our staff for assisting with the parade and I think Chris summed it up that, you know, I feel all of our staff rocked it really well on Friday night for the parade and things like that. So that was a really cold night and I'm just super proud of our staff for coming together and making, you know, those things able to happen and stuff. So appreciate them. Tomorrow, we do have our kickoff with Civic Plus, which is the alert system, notification system that we're excited to get in place and learn new things about that and hopefully roll that out in the first of the year. We did do a council onboarding with the new counselors. It was our first time, so hopefully it was some decent feedback. We're hoping to, that's something that we can continue to do as we have new counselors come in. It wasn't something that was done in the past. So hopefully that was helpful. And so thank you all for participating. I know it was, you know, we spent about four hours together, but I'm sure it probably could have been more. We probably scratched the surface of a lot of stuff. As y'all know, Lindenwood Project is on hold till next year. The weather did not cooperate. Nobody's happy about it. We know that. And rest assured, next year, we'll, we'll get the project done and it'll be nice and stuff. So I appreciate Don's efforts in managing that this year and I know that that's been a significant amount of his workload. So one of the other things too that I just wanted to update council on is the city council or the city of Linden is eligible for community development block grant dollars and we've used those over the years to do various projects. We've shared those, we've shared a portion of those funds with the senior operations. We've been able to do some ADA upgrades and stuff throughout the years. The city has never had a designation of low to mod, which really kind of doesn't allow us to use those funds. It only allows us to use those funds for very specific things. We have to, it's either ADA, senior operations, and there's maybe one other. We can't use those just for anything within the city. At the most recent census, half of the city, only half was designated as low to moderate, so which changed things up a bit. We are able to use those community development block grant dollars, which is that very much. We're literally talking like twenty some thousand dollars over a year period. But it would allow us to utilize those funds in that low to mod area for just about anything. It can be infrastructure, it can be lighting, it can be sidewalks, it can be various things. So that's something that was just, just changed and I'm learning more about it and talking with the county to see, you know, what we can do moving forward with different projects and things like that. The half of the city that was designated low to mod is anything west of Bridge Street. Is that right, Brad? Is that, is that correct? Okay. So very odd. Never had that, that happen where it's only half of the city. So more to come on that. And as time goes on, you guys will get more, more familiar, you know, when we have community development block grant dollars come forward. We have a project right now slated for ADA implements down at Amphitheater to create some accessible platforms for anybody who needs wheelchair accessibility to view, things like that. One of the other projects that we have upcoming in the next three years, hopefully, is also upgrades to the community center bathrooms. So very limited on those projects and a lot of times, unfortunately, if the projects don't come in, you know, close to mid, sometimes we run the risk of losing those dollars. So with this low to mod designation, it might help us retain those funds within the city. I'm working with staff right now. We're going to be doing a bunch of kickoff in-house just to start working and prepping for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget. So you'll see after the first year of timeline come forward that you guys will be in the April, sometime in April viewing, you know, draft of the budget and things like that. So, and then next month, we're hoping to have the architect for the building to come and be able to answer any questions on that project. Things were a little bit behind schedule with the project, obviously, because we didn't have an accurate set plans. Well, I guess, Don, correct me there. The plan showed that there were some inaccuracies, also showed that there was a little bit of a lean to the building. And so we've had to work on identifying that and working on scanning the building as well with the interior. And so that slowed things up a little bit, but we're hoping to have the architect come next month to be able to answer any questions on that. So. Yeah, absolutely.
Now, any other terms update?
Just two things. First of all, during the onboarding session, I spoke very briefly about the meetings act. It was exceptionally brief. I was asked if I would do a much more in-depth refresher on the meetings act and I said I would. I did that for council probably four or five years ago, certainly before this, this new group came on board. And I will be working with Kristen about scheduling that. I imagine it'll be after the first of the year. The other thing of note was I talked to Ellen about the paid sick time which is going to be taking effect in February and it's going to have some profound effects for all the boarders, the city included. So I'll be working with them in making sure that we have all of our eyes got to be infused across as it relates to that. That's all I got.
Thank you. Return it over. Now for our police department.
We haven't done it yet. Did you have any questions about it?
No questions.
Tom, any questions? Denise?
No questions.
Brad? Karen?
I'm good.
And?
No.
Typically with the, with any of the department reports are there and if anybody has any questions, it's kind of just, yeah, a blanket question.
We're going to move on to council comments. All right. Tonight, let's start with Jerry.
I would want to say, great job everyone on the holiday happening. I did jump out and tried to direct traffic from around the airport. Chief didn't give me any training, so maybe next year. If you were stuck in that traffic jam, my apologies. But it was a great event. A lot of people were involved and for as cold as it was, a lot of people showed up. So thank you for everybody that worked and put effort into it. It was great experience.
I also want to mention the hackings. That was a wonderful event. It was a pleasure to serve at the airport with Stephanie and Chad Johnson and guiding people to their spots for the lineup and also to help the parade walkers because they were shorthanded. So I waited you guys when you rode by, but I was keeping the crowd back from the clothes. It was a lot of fun, especially those little gear kids. And I'm a panelist at the Michigan Municipal League Training for New Elected Officers on Thursday. If anybody, the councilors here would like to go, call them. I'd be happy to try because I know I work in Lansing four days a week and so I'm happy to take you all with me if you want. And then finally, at the, at the Genesee Metro Alliance Meeting, we're working on roundabouts, popping up in all sorts of intersections you never thought Jerry would be. And the biggest thing that we deal with is education. So I proposed the Education Subcommittee for Genesee County Roads to help get instruction and public education so people know how to navigate roundabouts. Like, if there's an ambulance roaring behind you, what do you do? Well, you can do through the roundabout, but you don't just get over, but it's a new thing. So, and they accepted it and are part of that group now. Oh, what? Oh, gosh. There's some great memes out there about people driving in roundabouts. Just, just Google them, all right? Be happy to share a few because we've been sent up here. Oh, one more thing. From all of us, I just want to wish you a very, very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you all for coming. Thank you, Pam. Brenda?
So, I've been sick. Jerry, I owe you an apology. There is no training for the parade. Child care. I'm sorry. I, I watched, I was ill, but I did get to get, go down to Dr. Wex's building to the warming station and watch out the window. It was really nice. You guys did a really good job. I want to know how the drop off sign worked. I, I recommended new drop off signs. Everybody would drive left and go around the circle and drop their people off. I'm a process girl, so I'm always interested in this. I'll, I'll be out there next year holding it. Oh, the only thing that I did notice though was the Fontaine crew was towing stuff and a bunch of kids ran out the road, which was kind of scary. But I know that we address that every year. Just wanted to point that out, okay? You guys all do a great job controlling that.
He will get yelled at.
I don't want to get yelled at, but I mean, they're trying to do something else, but it's kind of dangerous. Okay, and, oh, just in a follow up comment on the applications of the commissions, anybody who applies, just put as much information on the application as you can. It just makes the process a lot easier. I, I just like to be comfortable with people coming in. I don't care if you're, you know, you've got a hundred things you want to put on there. Put it on there. I'm ready to read it and we're ready to accept anybody who wants to apply. Oh, MML training. Ellen had talked about getting with all the new counselors and doing training. The Michigan Municipal League does a really great weekend in Frankenmuth. You guys won't want to miss that. It's really great. The one thing that helped me when I first started on council, besides asking Brad and Danielle and Heather and everybody questions, was that going to the Michigan, Michigan Municipal League Training, I sat in that meeting and I don't know how many times I went, ah, that's why they said that. Oh, that's why they're doing that. So that, that will help you so much just from a foundational. So, that, that will help you so much, just from a foundational level. So, I suggest you do that as quickly as you can, I think you'll really like it. And, um, I think that's all I have, thank you. Sorry, Jerry.
Thank you, Brenda, and Tom, do you have anything to add?
We were in the parade, and also, it was so nice to see all, I think everybody showed up. Everybody was having fun, the organization was put together great. Afterwards, I was out driving around, and I could see the DPW guys out picking up signs and making sure the roads were clear and everything. So, everybody did a super job, and I just wanna thank everybody.
Thank you, Tom, Denise?
First, yes, um, DPW, amazing. I watched your crew up on, um, every streetlight, putting those up, Miss Suzie. Um, and it was cold out there, and these people did an amazing job. Cleaned up the next day, it was done. So, our city looks just like nothing ever happened to it. Um, Happening Linden, you can't, can't leave them. They're, uh, a gem for the city. You guys pulled this off, and it was so cold, and we still had people sitting there waiting. It was amazing. The people out there, um, watching for the parade, it was so cool to watch. We took Tom's truck and put a lot of new signs on it and drove down. And I gotta say, the Santa Claus was like, rain floats down behind us, and it was, it was really good. And the whole organization that made this happen, you know, you can't pat, pat them on the back enough. The onboarding that, um, Ellen and this group did for the, the new council coming in, and the mayor, was amazing. We learned so much about every single department in this city. And it gave us a new light of what we want and how we want, what our citizens want from the city. And we're gonna, we're gonna do it. So, thank you all departments, you know, to, from Losi to the parade, to his call in Kristen, when I'm like worried about something or can't find something, and, um, I'm proud to be on his board, and Merry Christmas.
Brad?
Luckily for you, my battery's going low on my microphone, so. No, I, I would like to thank all our new counselors, but our existing counselors, for being in the parade. They're telling you they all slapped magnets on the side, and they stood out in the cold, and they helped direct traffic, just because it's, you know, their duty is helping out the community. And they slapped magnets on the side of Tom's truck and jumped in the parade, because I had the MTA trolley booked for them, and MTA shorted me some shuttle buses, so I took the trolley with the council and used it to shuttle people, because that's what you do. We're here to serve the people, and I appreciate all you for that, and coming out and helping out and jumping in in the uncharted waters, you, you just jump right out in front of the car, Jerry.
And you still have legs?
And then, I'm looking, I'm sitting here and looking around up here, and I just realized something. I'm the old man in council now. I'm the senior member first, like. I caused a break in the building, and that's me.
We appreciate you, Brad.
We appreciate.
Thank you, Brad. Um, I first wanna thank Happening in Linden, while it was very, very cold, it was just so amazing. Oh, my microphone keeps dying, Jerry. There we go. Can anybody hear me? There we go. Um, so I wanna thank Happening in Linden, um, and everyone that worked so hard for that parade. While it was cold, there were an awful lot of smiles on an awful lot of faces as we were driving by, and that was amazing to see. I want to thank all those that submitted board na- uh, board and commission applications. Um, thank you for your service and for serving Linden, um, we all appreciate feeling. Um, I wanna thank the residents, all of you that came out tonight, and those that'll be watching, um, you know, one of those three recordings tonight. Um, thank you for your patience, I promise I will do better as we go. And I wanna wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Um, I hope your families are all safe, warm, and blessed this Christmas season. And with that, uh, there's... Oh, we gotta pay, I'm ready to go. All right, we have block B bills. Merry Christmas, though, okay, sorry about that.
You've paid bills.
There we go. All right, we're gonna move on to the financial reports, another mistake. All right. Um, so if I make a motion that we pay bills? Support!
Suck it.
Kristen?
Miller?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Dick?
I hate seeing yes was over a hundred thousand, yes.
Me?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Armstrong?
Yes. And there is no closed session, so I call this meeting at seven fifty-nine PM.